I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. Please listen to the rules and procedures that will follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary, and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in, and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you are acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied, it just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction, or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the Building Department before your go-ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property, but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner, or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone that needs adjournment? Please rise and join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. First application tonight is application 24-259 of Babool Howlander, property located in North Babylon. Want to name an address for the record, please?
Babool Howlander, and 12 Carl Spat, North Babylon.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, we have a Planning Division memo dated February 6, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated February 10, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Alphonse Pesci dated October 8, 2024, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman has four photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
I bought this house from the auction, and I was trying to do kitchen and the bathroom. I applied for the work permit, and then I learned it, like, is close to the street, it needed to be set back more. So, all I know, I bought it from the auction, and then it is close to the street, it should be in the back, and I don't know anything about it, so... And all the houses in the block is the same, my house and the other three, four houses in the block, and my house more inside than the other three houses. And on the left side also, I have entrance for the basement, and it's showing here, according to the survey, showing a nine and a half feet, I have it, it should be 10 feet. And I did the measurement myself also, and I see is there 11 feet is in there, not even nine and a half feet.
You're talking about the stairway to the front yard?
Not the front, on the side. The front, I have it like 36 feet, and from the street to the house porch.
Whatever's on the survey...
Survey, yeah, that's the final things.
That's it? You don't see anything we can go by?
Yeah, I'm a little bit off from there.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, I think this is it, yes.
Turn the hearing over.
And I have some pictures also from the house, how it's set up, and I have also the pictures of the house, I did the video also, I have it with me.
You'll have to take your phone. Well, you gotta leave it there. No, 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 you can't present it like that, you have to, for the record, you can't present it like that. You'd have to get and bring in photos.
Or email them.
Or email them, or whatever, yeah.
Yes, so, that's all I have it with me.
Okay, I'll turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
Okay, so, when did you purchase the property at the auction?
That was like July, or August.
2024?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so you pretty much bought it as is?
I bought it as is.
Yeah, so, we do have some issues. First, the stairway, the stairs to the basement?
Yes.
It's facing the street?
Yes.
Which poses it almost like two front doors, almost? We would like that to face the rear yard, if possible.
There's a, the thing is in, there is a chimney is in there, so it cannot go in the other side.
Oh, the chimney is right behind it?
Yes.
Boilers, and the further rear? Okay, currently, right now, is there a fence in front of the stairs to the basement? No, no, you can stay there.
You have to stay there.
I'm sorry, what is saying?
Currently, right now, is there fencing blocking the basement, the stairs?
Oh, there's no fence now. Was there before, but now is no fence.
Oh, you took it down?
Oh, somebody broke it.
In other words, those steps goes directly down from the front, if somebody's coming and walking there, you go directly down the steps?
There is some, the platform is in there, and then you go down, like, three feet by four feet, or four feet by four feet, there are steps, the platform, and then you go down.
But the fence is totally gone.
No more fence is in there.
Okay. Do you plan on replacing the fencing that was there?
I don't replace it, no.
You're not, are you going to?
Uh, no.
Probably not, okay. The front porch, did you make any changes to that since you purchased the property?
No, I didn't change anything.
No?
No.
Do you plan on, do you plan on changing?
No, I don't plan anything to do it.
So what are you doing to the house that you had a stop-work order?
Well, I probably applied, I get the stop-work order, I don't know, you know, why I get these things, I was not, David also, no inspector was in there also building, but I see the paper on the door, and I don't do, you know, like, I bought it as is.
Okay, so any work that you were doing was interior?
Interior only, the paint, and then I was going to do the paint, and do the kitchen and the bathroom.
Same format, you would just update it?
Same, I don't change anything inside, nothing.
Okay.
What about outside, did you change anything outside?
No, I don't do anything outside also.
Okay, and the basement is just the crawl space, right? It's not a full basement?
There's a half of the house, there's a basement is in there.
Okay.
There's a boiler is in there, so you go to the boiler from there, and it come from inside too.
Okay, well, if we were to approve this application, do you agree not to enclose the front porch? And do you agree not to enclose the front porch?
Well, I mean, there's a, houses built like that, and is on the roof also, then you have to break a lot of things, and it's gonna cost me a lot of things, and I don't expect like that.
Listen, you gotta understand, you bought a house, at auction, you bought it as is, whatever problems existed with the house. So, would you agree not to enclose the front porch, is it currently there?
I mean, I prefer to have it as is, if it's possible.
Yeah, it's open, right, it's currently open?
Yeah, it's open now, yeah, we gotta keep, no, I'm not gonna close it.
You agreed to remain?
No, I'm not gonna close, no.
Okay, good.
There's a small space of three or four feet, you cannot close it also, it's open.
Yeah.
We're asking you to keep it open.
Yeah, I'll keep it open, yes.
You agreed to not close it.
No, I'm not gonna close it.
Okay.
Okay, and do you agree to leave the base, remain, have the basement remain open, undivided area as per the plan submitted, so as is?
Yes, I would like to keep it as is.
Okay, perfect. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision, you'll get the decision in the mail, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Also submit those pictures and videos you have.
Yeah, if you wanna submit them, submit them, I'll keep the record open for the pictures.
Shall I email it to you now, or I can do that? All right, can...
Next application is application 25-009 of Richard Pennitz and Patricia Constantino, property located in West Babylon.
Hello?
Hey, how are you? Name and address for the record.
Patricia Constantino, 52 Manhattan Avenue, West Babylon, New York, 11704.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a Planning Division memo dated February 6, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated February 10, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Michael K. Wick, dated July 16, 2024, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman has eight photographs, and a site plan by Michael Angelen dated November 25, 2024.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Uh, well, I was unaware of, when we bought the house, 1999, it looked like an army bunker, so we put the front portico on, I was unaware that you needed a permit or anything for that. It's been there since 2006. Yeah, there's other houses on the block, there's one that has one, not quite as big, but it, there is another one there, and some surrounding blocks also have something similar. Also with the fence, so, that's the old fence, that's the original fence that was, came to the house, I just replaced it to where it was recent, two years ago. The driveway was put in also, I believe, in 2006. The shed has been there since 2000, 2001. Also, never had an issue, nobody's ever said anything, so I was not aware. I did have, the other driveway was already there, we had added that one that you're looking at now. You know, between the kids' cars, my cars, the tenants' cars, and then my husband passed away in 2015. But the kids were having cars too, so I was trying to keep everything off the street. But, yeah, that's it. I have, as far as the six-foot fence has to be like that for the pool, I mean, I didn't change the fence from where it was, I just put it back in the same spot it was, the only thing I, we added in 2006 was the driveway and the portico and the walkway. And I have pictures of other houses that have, it says about a safety issue as far as on that side of the street, because I guess the fence, the chimney you can see is right there, and right on the other side of that chimney is my propane tank. So, it would be a big problem to move it, so I don't know if you guys would allow that to be, since it's been there for so long. There's never been an accident on that corner. I've never had an issue about backing up, you can't see down the street when you're backing up. And I have pictures of other houses in the area who are set up similarly.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just need, before we go on, I just need to amend the application to add a fourth variance, allow a six-foot fence within 10 feet of a driveway. All in favor? Okay, now I'll turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
Okay, so, the, do you currently have a third kitchen?
No, that's all gone. That's, everything was pulled out.
How long ago?
So, in April.
Okay, this year, well, last year.
Yeah, well, I had had my sister when my husband passed away, it's been rough.
Sorry about that, I understand. All right, so, kitchen's removed, what about the garage conversion?
So, that's in the works.
You're working on that currently?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The fence now, is it connecting to your rear neighbor's yard, their fence?
No, actually, the fence, that's, well, it lines up with it, that's not a newer picture, I have a newer picture. I now have PVC, because that fence was falling down, because of the pool, I have to make sure that it stays intact with self-closing gates. Okay, well, I don't know if I have, I didn't print those, I printed my capooty, I just have the printers, I don't have the ones of my house, I just have the same ones that you have from older pictures.
Is your neighbor's fence in line with your fence?
Yeah, perfectly, perfectly lined up.
So, it's here, where would we want it, move it in here? Okay, that shed, is that shed able to be moved to a conforming location?
I mean, I have, the shed's been there since like 2001, I'm afraid that, there's bushes on the other side, there's really only one place to put it, which would be on the same side of the street. I mean, I could take the bushes down, but I think the thing would fall apart if I tried to move it.
Would you agree that if it had to be taken down and replaced, would you agree to put it in a legal location?
Sure, which, where would that have to go? I mean, I'm not looking to take it down, right?
Right.
It fell down, if it...
Oh, yes.
Came disarray, and you had to replace it?
Yes, again, I wasn't aware, but, that's just the pictures that I had taken, you know, of other sheds from, in my area, right up in the same spot, so I didn't know it was a problem. And the pool equipment is on the far corner.
And when was your portico erected?
I believe it was 2006.
It is nice, it is large, but it is nice.
It looked like an army bunker, my husband was a veteran, so, he goes, "That looks like an army bunker." I said, "No, no, we could change it," I didn't know.
All right, so, we, they, we, the fencing is the biggest problem? We need something, you gotta either cut back the portico a bit, or move the fencing in?
What do you mean, cut back the portico?
It's too large. So the portico...
So, I mean, there's other houses that have similar porticos, I mean, it's...
Is it...
It's just an overhang, I haven't changed the front door at all.
Is the house that you're referring to, has it been, has it visited this board?
I'm sorry?
Has it had approval from this board, the house that you're referring to?
Oh, I don't know. I would have to change the whole thing, and that would be a lot of money too. I mean, I don't think it's intruding anybody's sightline.
Wasn't it because it was too far up?
The neighbors also had a plan that they couldn't see.
The other application?
There's no other driveway on that side?
Yeah. Okay, all right, so, if we approve this application, do you agree not to enclose the front porch?
Oh, no, no.
You already agreed that if the shed is ever to be taken down, it'll be rebuilt in a conforming location, and...
And like I said, it's been like that since 2006, I have no, believe me, I'm on my own, no more work gonna be done.
All right, I have no further questions.
Excuse me, any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. So we're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, you'll get the decision in the mail, okay? Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Next application is application 25-008 of Yolanda A. and Leonard B. Young, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record.
Generico Zalino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729.
You do affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
God bless.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hold on, let me bring this stuff in. For the record, we have a Planning Division memo dated February 6, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated February 10, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Peter J. Barbason, undated, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman has eight photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Here for the homeowner, Leonard Young, residing at 545 Mount Avenue, West Babylon, so known as Section 106, Block 1, Lot 36, located in Residence B Zone. Subject property is in a regular lot measuring approximately 90 feet deep by 111 feet wide, for a total of 9,158.5 square feet. We're requesting relief from the board to build a front-covered porch, a first-floor sided addition, expanding the small existing kitchen and adding a storage closet, also adding a new second floor, consisting of three bedrooms and a full bathroom. The proposed additions require a variance for rear yard setback, requesting to build that 5.1 feet instead of permitted 25 feet, a difference of 19.9 feet. Second floor is to be built over the existing first floor, therefore not encroaching further into the rear yard setback. We're also legalizing an existing detached garage that requires a variance for rear yard setback, requesting to maintain 4.5 feet instead of the permitted 8 feet, a difference of 3.5 feet. The Planning Department requested an approximate date that the garage was built was around 2001 by the previous owners. The additions will have no significant impact to the environment, will not affect any of the adjacent properties and fit in with the character and nature of the neighborhood. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
All right, so the garage is to, is storage only?
It's a garage, yes.
Storage only, no conversion?
As you can see from the pictures, no, yeah.
It looks, looks nice.
Yes.
Not like what's on the screen now. It's to remain that way, no heating, plumbing, no commercial work permitted in garage?
Correct.
You agree?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And we're just expanding for extra space, we're not renting, no...
No rentals, it's a one-family.
Perfect. All right, we're going straight up, same structure of the house?
Correct.
Perfect, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
All right, I make a motion to approve application 25-008, with the four conditions, that the shed be removed, and the garage be used as storage space, no habitable space, no heating, plumbing, and no commercial work.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm next.
Lucky you.
Next application is application 25-007 of Mark A. and Sylvia Maldonado, property located in Lindenhurst. For the record?
Generico Zalino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth again?
Yes, sir.
For the record, we have a Planning Division memo dated February 6, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated February 10, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by William Hogan dated November 19, 2024, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman has also eight photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Here for the homeowners, Mark and Sylvia Maldonado, residing at 59 Maple Drive, Lindenhurst, also known as Section 128, Block 1, Lot 91, located in the C Zone. We're requesting relief from the board to build a new 27 by 45.2 second-floor addition, with a two-foot rear cantilever over the existing footprint of the house, and a new front-covered porch. Proposed addition will consist of a new master suite with a bathroom and a walk-in closet, and three additional bedrooms, also a common bathroom and laundry. Proposed additions require variance for front yard setback, requesting to build that 20.8 feet to the porch, and 26.2 feet to the new second floor, instead of the permitted 30 feet, a difference of 9.2 feet, and 3.8 feet respectively. Variance for side yard setbacks, requesting to build that 9.7 feet to the west, 4.8 feet on the east side instead of the permitted 10 feet, a difference of 0.3 feet and 5.2 feet respectively. Variance also for total side yard setback, requesting to build that 14.5 feet instead of permitted 25 feet, a difference of 10.5 feet. One-foot encroachment of eaves, variance for total building area, requesting to build that 48.13% instead of the permitted 30%, a difference of 18.13% or 1,088.1 square that 48.13% instead of the permitted 30%, a difference of 18.13% or 1,088.1 square feet, of which 12.3% or 737.2 square feet are mostly pavers on grade. We're also legalizing a hot tub that requires a variance for side yard setback, requesting to maintain one foot instead of required six feet, difference of five feet, and variance for a vinyl shed with a rear yard setback of 0.3 feet instead of permitted two feet, difference of 1.7 feet. We have a consent letter from the neighbor regarding the hot tub I would like to submit. This is the neighbor, this is the neighbor on the westernly side mostly affected by the hot tub. The shed will be moved in compliance with a two-foot setback, and that is it.
So the shed, so number seven then can be eliminated? You're going to move that to two feet?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to delete variance number seven on application 25-007.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's talk about the hot tub. I mean, I think there have been other problems, people complaining about the hot tub being too close to the property. Any chance we can move that hot tub somewhat?
We can maintain two feet, so we don't have to, you know, rerun the electric any further. As far as, we'll stretch it as much as we can if two feet is okay.
How long's the hot tub been there?
Since 2016, since 2016, which is when they installed the pool, which is a little puzzling to the homeowners why it wasn't picked up then. So here we are, nonetheless.
And you're going to remove the pool deck and the gazebo according to your plans?
The gazebo's already removed.
Okay.
The pool deck is to be removed, as stated in the plot plan.
And you would agree to the front porch not being enclosed?
Yes, sir.
I missed it. So again, I think the biggest concern here is the hot tub, so I don't know what it would take to move that. It should be six feet. It's only one foot off the property line.
We can do three feet. We'll maintain three feet. I think that would work. Because there's sort of no other way, no other place to put it.
Well, you can't just
I understand.
Slide it over? I mean, I know it's not that easy to just slide it, but I mean, you know, it seems like there's a little bit of a spot that you need to move it over.
Do, well, we can maintain three feet if the board is okay with that.
Okay, I, you know, you'd have to resubmit the survey showing it at three feet for sure.
The plot plan and the survey, correct.
That's it. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. So we're going to close the hearing. We're going to keep the record open for a new survey showing the hot tub being moved and rule on the thing then. Yeah, right. Nobody's here on this application. Thought I asked, but I could be wrong. All right, thanks.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Where are we going? Next application is application 25-003 of Apple Food Services of Long Island, property located in Lindenhurst. Name and address for the record?
Keith Archer, Harris Bluman Archer, 445 Broad Dollar Road, Melville, New York, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 6, 2025. Environmental control memo dated February 10, 2025. Tax map acting as an area map. A survey by Nelson &amp; Pope dated February 28, 1998, and?
Chairman, there's four photographs in the site plan by Nelson &amp; Pope dated November 20 of 2024.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure, thank you. So this application is in connection with the request to renew and to modify a sign variance as previously granted by this board going back to December of 2004. I believe I did all of the applications, and it's for the existing Applebee's Restaurant, and that situated northeast corner of Sunrise Highway and Wellwood Avenue. It's in the shopping center that currently has a King Cullen, Rite Aid, Five Below, and some smaller stores. So the specific request is to increase the number of wall signs on the south wall and the west wall of the Applebee's Restaurant from one sign to seven signs, but I would note that five of those quote-unquote "signs" on both the west elevation and the south elevation are actually awning signs that are about six square feet each in size. The, uh, over the windows. The facial signs basically are substantially similar to the signs that were previously approved by the board. Dimensions have changed a little bit, but the square footage overall, except for the window signs, really hasn't changed in any, in any substantial way. So our request is to approve these signs as proposed.
Okay, just a little housekeeping here. I need to amend the planning memo, all in connection with the erection of a non-conforming wall signs.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. So they had seven signs before, too, or is it just?
No, they, they didn't have the, they had awnings, but they didn't have any writings on them.
On the awnings?
Or any designs on them. So now, on several of the windows, they have this Apple design, which counts as a, counts as a sign, but each of those is about six square feet. So it's, as you can tell from the elevation, it's tastefully done and doesn't really jump out at you. It's subtle.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Wait, who?
Suffolk County Planning.
Oh, okay. We're waiting for Suffolk County Planning on this, so probably, well, we're off next week, the following week.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's not, you know, Suffolk County Planning just comes to the zoning.
No, I get it. It's on State Road.
I'm sure there's no problem here, so it's fine, but, all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it. Have a good night, all.
You, too.
Thanks.
Okay, next application is application 25-006 of Elite Motorsports, property located in Lindenhurst.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record?
Christine Fay, Accurate Expediting, 286A Belmont Avenue, West Babylon, New York.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 7, 2025. Environmental control memo dated February 11, 2025. If we were to approve this application, it would require a negative declaration. Fire marshal's report dated February 13, 2025, no violations. Suffolk County Planning memo dated February 11, 2025. Decision of local determination, take no position for or against. Survey by Daniel Fallasco dated December 11, 2024, tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's five photographs.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A little background on Elite Motorsports. Elite Motorsports is a boutique repair shop performing service on European cars and also sells quality cars. Elite started out over 11 years ago in the town of Brookhaven in Medford. They then moved to the Route 109 location in which we came before the board and was approved for their special use permit at that location. Their business grew and they needed more space. In 2022, they rented this space on Sunrise Highway, as you know. That space was a lot larger and fit their needs. They did not know it was required to renew an existing special exception permit. They thought that was still in effect. Turns out, the existing approval expired in 2017. So they came to me, they had a complaint, they hired me. We've worked with Inspector Giordano, Mr. Schaefer, Denise Graziano, and Katie Riley during this time. Elite had some cars for sale parked on the grass, which they've removed months ago. I understand the concern of the board and a neighbor who is present regarding the 44th Street parking, which is where their employees park, but since we have made an agreement with IHOP to park over there. The fire marshal stopped by yesterday and stated there was no violations. Elite Motorsports is not a fly-by-night company. They have a great reputation and have many reviews. They pride themselves in achieving high service to their many clients. They're trying to keep their doors open and their employees at work until they find another home. There's a MAKO application in with the town, and when it's approved, the owner and Elite have agreed that Elite Motorsports will be vacating the premises. The owner will give them six months' notice. Elite is actively in the process of finding a new location. We would like the board to consider granting this special exception for the term of one year. They might not even be there that long, but asking for a year, we feel is not substantial. Thank you.
Okay, you answered some questions I had about MAKO and how long and stuff like that, so that's fine. So I think the biggest problem here is too many cars, cars being parked out on the street, neighbors complaining, and so I think that's the issue. You're asking for 11 vehicles. Can you actually have only 11 vehicles there?
So they planned on putting 11 for sale up front, and then there's some space in the back. Kai is here. He can, he can speak on that, and there's also a neighbor here regarding the cars.
Okay. I think that's really it, because we wanted to talk about the MAKO thing, and also we need to come up with a plan for the, for the cars. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
For the record, your correspondent is number three. You have an email addressing some concerns regarding this application?
Number two?
Number two.
Number two.
Okay. It's okay. It's by Mike Ivanoff, Ivanoff? Oh, you're here. Okay, okay. In that case, okay, so we have that, and we'll read that into the record. Okay. Would anyone like to be heard on this application?
Kai, did you want to speak? Move that.
Whatever you guys want to work out. Name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Kai Hancriamon, 37 44th Street, Lindenhurst.
What would you like, would you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
What would you like to tell us?
For the record, that's a very old satellite image that doesn't look anywhere near like that. If you Google Elite Motorsports, you could see updated photos of what it actually looks like right now, because that's not, you know, nowhere near what it is. Secondly, we agreed to move the cars off the grass when Inspector Giordano came, and I actually got a second lot just to move them, and, yeah, that's, that's a more accurate picture. All those cars off the grass are all gone, and we're looking for anything up front that we could keep doing business.
Still have more than 11 cars?
Yeah, like I said, that, that's, all the cars on the grass are all gone. If you cycle through the pictures, you could see.
I see 11 in the front, and, and there's car, yeah, and how many you got in the back there?
Well, those are all customer cars. They get pulled in at night, so nothing stays out.
That doesn't stay out?
That doesn't stay out.
And are we staying off of 44th Street?
Yes.
As far as parking goes?
Correct. Our, my employees are, so, so we were parking at the, across the street at IHOP and the parking lot there, so 44th Street will be clear as possible.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the recent photo you have, you have these four cars parked in front of that. They're not supposed to be like that either, though.
Correct. They're, like I said, this is an older top picture when the cars were still on the grass. Nothing is blocking the main driveway.
It looks like you're also using almost one space for two cars. Could be wrong there, but.
For that picture, yes.
Yeah, for that picture, it's not like that anymore.
It's not like that anymore, no.
So you use one car per space?
One car, one car per space, correct.
When, when did you remove the cars off the grass?
Three were banned in January.
Right, that's when?
Yeah, when Inspector Giordano came, we moved them. It was actually before that, yeah. Yeah, so this, these, these aren't accurate. This picture is not accurate. So is that one either. So that whole driveway is open right now, where the rent mouse is.
Today.
Yeah.
I'm going to drive by tomorrow.
All right.
All right.
I'll drive by tonight, so.
I gotta go move some of them, guys. Like I said, the fire, the fire marshal came yesterday. His main concern was getting a fire truck through there, and it's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record?
Hi, Mike Ivanoff, 23 44th Street, in Lindenhurst.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
What would you like to tell us about?
I've lived in this on 44th Street, a little further down from Elite, closer to Wellwood. Right? Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Oh, where's, yours, your house? Keep going down, right where that pool is, I believe.
Okay.
Right there. Don't pull. Right with, right next to the pool, no. Anyway, I live closer to, to Wellwood, so maybe a block away. Looks a little further on there. I've lived there for 45 years. The area in question originally was a King Bear Repair Shop only, and many years ago, they came and they requested to, because the business wasn't doing well, they requested to put a few cars there. It was approved. I did come and ask questions, and I agreed if they had a couple of cars there, it shouldn't be a problem. But as you can see from the photo, and even the way it reads now, the way it reads now, to me, it looks like there's only going to be 11 cars there, but then in talking earlier, and I passed it today, there's probably 30 cars there right now. And also, in the past, not, you know, maybe not in the last couple of months, but in the past, there's been tow trucks dropping off cars there. There's been police activity. And the three houses, if you look at the picture, to the left of the picture, if, my left, if I'm looking at it, if you take the arrow and go across the street, no, the others, the other way, the other way, right there, right where those three houses are across on 40, keep going, right there, right there. Those three houses at one point in time were owner-occupied. Now they're rented or transient people. There's a lot of movement, and people who've lived there said they don't want to live across the street from there, and they don't want to, people can't afford to pay top dollar for a house that's right there. Also, where the, where the cars are parked on 44th Street, they've been there for a long time. Cars are parked there. Right, right before I came here, there were cars parked there. I would like to see, if you do approve this, to have no parking on that, no parking on that side of the street and no entrance on 44th Street. I mean, it's great to have a repair shop there. I don't know how the fire department could have approved going in and out through the entrance and exit there, because there are always cars there. And, you know, the way it was described to me, it would be 11 cars plus. So I just think there's too many cars there. I think it's a great place for a repair shop, but unfortunately, between the, the business next door, Dave Banks, during the day, has a lot of cars there. He usually gets rid of them at night, and if you go past IHOP the other way, go the, no, the other way north, you see those other cars right there? There's also like a Cars for Cash place that has a lot of cars there. So the whole, you know, quarter-mile area, when I have people that have moved out of Lindenhurst and came back, they're shocked that there's so many cars in, in the area. They're telling me, what is this, this is turning into Queens. So that's my, that's my concern, that, you know, Kai is my neighbor, great person, and I know they're and I know there's supposed to be a Mako coming there, that's been in the works for two or three years. But as of now, I would just like to see, you know, I'd like to see no cars there, but I would say a maximum would be, you know, under ten, and with no parking on Forty-Fourth Street, just for a pure safety factor, because you do have people coming in and out of IHOP, especially on the weekends, but I know they're closed Saturday and Sunday, but it is a high-traffic area on the weekends, because IHOP is right there. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none, so? Yeah, she said a year, within a year. We're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, we're gonna take a look at the site and get it down to the eleven cars that you're asking for. And then we'll entertain approving the application.
Okay.
But also, we're gonna ask that no cars be parked on Forty-Fourth Street, so you're gonna have to, gonna have to clean the site up, so, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, ah, for the record. Next application is twenty-five zero zero five, property located in Deer Park. Name and address for the record, please?
It's Michael Lorato, two forty-five Route one oh nine, Suite D, West Babylon, New York, one-one-seven oh seven.
And you affirm to tell the truth?
One-one-seven oh four. I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, environmental control memo dated February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, fire marshal's report dated February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, no violations. A Suffolk County Planning memo dated February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, decision of local determination, take no position for or against. Survey by De Rome, De Maro Engineering dated, or last dated, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's seven photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay, so we're here today for a special exception permit to operate a garage for an auto repair, allowing outdoor storage of vehicles awaiting repair on both side and the rear yard. This property has been operating as an auto body shop for many years. Last time this application was in front of the board was back in two thousand and twenty-two, which was case number twenty-two dash one-three-four. Nothing has changed on the site since the last time this application was in front of the board. We received the planning, sorry, we received the planning division memorandum, and I've already made some of the changes per their request. We removed the non-permitted flag banners. The yard's been cleaned up. The owner has advised that none of the vehicles that were on the street that were in question are his, so he has a total of three employee, two employees, so there's a total of three cars, which all the cars can fit on his lot or in the side lot. He also has two work trucks, one flatbread and one tow truck, which stay in the side yard for storage. We would ask that if this, if this application is granted, that it is approved, like the last one was approved for three years instead of the one year. And as mentioned earlier, they had an inspection today by the fire marshal, and there were no violations and everything had passed. I have some updated photos of the yard that he took today. I'll show you guys what it looks like. I might email Katie those earlier today, I don't think you have them in the system yet, though. So that just kind of shows what the front looks like, and then if you go through the pictures, you'll see what the yard looks like, vehicles, how the storage is. It'll also show that all those flag banners are down. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mrs. Croquetis.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Hi. So, just a question, are you gonna, are they gonna be towing out of that location as well?
I mean, whatever's needed, so if, they're gonna be towing to that location, so it's an auto repair, so if a car's damaged, they're gonna come there.
Are they looking to go on the towing roster through the town?
I mean, because if they want, it was, they would probably want to do that, yeah, it's helpful.
Okay. And just to confirm, the, that side yard, it's just for cars awaiting repair?
Yeah, that side yard over there, correct.
Okay.
None of those cars up front are his, like, I don't know how old those pictures are, but?
And on West First Street there, not his cars either?
No, he has plenty of space, like, you'll see the picture of his yard today, like, it's cleaned up, there's plenty of, there's ample parking on the side, and even in the back if he needed to.
Okay.
So he doesn't need to utilize the street.
And you said the flags were removed too, right?
Yeah, you can go through those photos that are coming around, you'll see, I took pictures of that fencing. I think that's, those are the flag signs that you were in question. I don't know who saw those. Yeah, on that, on that fence line over there? Yeah, those were all taken down. We didn't even know those were not, I didn't even know you needed a permit for those.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, you get the decision in the mail, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.